Call the order, the subcommittee here. Um, like to call the order, the athletic subcommittee and committee, the whole meeting, uh, roll call, please. Ms.
Uh, Mr. Casillas.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Casillas.
Present.
And Mr. Ford.
Great, thank you. No, he's out, he's absent.
He's absent, okay. Okay, cool.
Do you want to note the, um, observers?
Oh, right, observers. Ms. Capola, Mr. Gergio, Ms. Jewes, Ms., uh, uh, da, 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 Ms. Powers, Ms. Dr. Tuttwiler, uh, Mr. Sadowite, uh, Ms. Gailey, Mayor McGee, John Myhouse, Robbie Dennis, Kenny McKeel, Jennifer McCaffrey, Ms. McDonough, Sheila O'Donnell, Donna Rivers, Mike, somebody, Josh, Josh Moore, uh, Lisa Calvin, and Vega, Ms. Jackson, Nancy Matusus, something. I'm reading the names on my screen.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, we're, we're good. But thank you, and thank you to all, everyone else who is, is, uh, joining and observing as well, uh, for the, this subcommittee meeting. Um, so there's only one item on the subcommittee meeting, which is winter sports. Um, so maybe we can turn it over to Dr. Tuttwiler for, for an update. Um, Member Castellanos, is that good with you?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna look for, so.
Oh, I thought you were asking my if you thought it was good with me. I'm fine with you turning it over to me. Uh, uh, especially for this, uh, I, you know, it, the last time we met, uh, there was a, a pretty deep conversation, uh, about winter sports, uh, and whether it was safe, uh, or not to proceed, uh, and really sort of, uh, developing a, a path forward, uh, to make a determination in the way it was left in last meeting, was to revisit, uh, after the vacation week, uh, after an opportunity to sort of assess how things are going. And, um, just today, uh, you know, it was announced in the, the papers, uh, and approved by the MIAA, uh, the greater, the GBL, Greater Boston Athletic League, um, has voted to shift, uh, not just their winter season, uh, but their winter, fall two, and spring seasons. Uh, winter would begin on, uh, March 1st and go until April 10th. Uh, the fall two, uh, season, which would be volleyball, soccer, cross-country football, field hockey, uh, for the schools that have it, April 12th, uh, to May 15th. And then, uh, the spring season would run May 17th until July 1st. Uh, and the exciting piece of that, I think, uh, is that it offers an opportunity, uh, for our student athletes, uh, in the Lynn Public Schools, uh, regardless of what season or what sport you, you play, to, to have an opportunity to engage. Uh, there's still some question about some sports, uh, like, uh, wrestling, uh, for example. Um, but, uh, the vast majority of the sports are captured, uh, in this proposal, and, uh, I think it's, uh, exciting and, uh, I hope, uh, breeds some optimism, uh, for our student athletes and for our schools who, um, you know, uh, really like seeing or, or hearing or, uh, following, uh, uh, the, the sports scene in the city. Uh, and so, so with that, uh, tomorrow, uh, I know that the athletic directors are finalizing, uh, their proposal that will, uh, go, uh, to the, uh, city's health director. Again, this would be in preparation for a, um, a, a March 1st start for the winter athletics, but, uh, if it's ready, why not start having that conversation? Uh, and then it's just, uh, uh, a, really a sense of sort of waiting until, and hoping that things improve, uh, as we approach that date.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I see Member Castellanos has a question.
Dr. Tuttwiler, I think, I appreciate it, um, your insight, your information. I know you guys have been proactive, working, you know, on this issue. Uh, when, when the protocols, I, they, they, I, I know they, they were provided during the initial discussion from MIAA, I know they were minding through the protocols, um, just, you know, not, not probably a month and a half ago. Like, that was the proposal, are they, are the A.D.s meaning to discuss the, the projected protocols that we're gonna go through? Or what, what exactly does that, what does that entail tomorrow? What's tomorrow's meeting about?
Uh, it's finalizing, remember that, um, you know, the, uh, not necessarily MIAA, but, uh, the EEA, uh, it's a state agency, is the one that, um, the department or arm of the state government that, uh, sort of, you, you know, created the lay of the land in terms of expectations. But then, um, there are local, uh, protocols and, uh, policies that, that, you know, that are really up to each individual community or school. Uh, and so, those are the pieces, I mean, you have to follow the EEA guidance, uh, but in terms of, um, you know, what, you know, whether or not spectators are allowed, uh, specifics around, uh, you know, entry and exit, uh, and, you know, practice, things of that nature are, are more, uh, local decisions. So, that's the pieces, I understand it, that's being finalized, uh, and will, you know, could go to the health director this week. But this, but again, this is in preparation for March. Uh, and I, you know, I was not at that, uh, meeting among, and superintendents don't typically attend, uh, meetings with, between principals and the A.D.s, who made this, uh, proposal and decision to move. But I can tell you that, uh, I think it was out of a, sort of a family, uh, like approach, uh, given that, you know, where Lynn was in terms of its context and challenges around COVID, positive cases, where Revere is, where Chelsea is, uh, where Somerville is, uh, just so many schools within that, uh, conference, uh, you know, experiencing challenges. It just made sense to shift, uh, for the entire conference. Uh, and so, I think this is really good news, uh, and I hope, uh, you, you, you share in that, uh, enthusiasm.
Yeah, can I just add to that? That, um, the A.D.s in Lynn have been working on these protocols together. So, my guess is that tomorrow is to just fine tune some things. But they've been working on this all along.
So, just, I just wanted to add, Attorney Sadowite, I just wanna, I just wanna ask one more, uh, clarified question. So, practice-wise, uh, uh, you know, the threshold, part of the conversation tomorrow, you know, I know it's, it's, it's gonna be conducted locally, um, but, you know, some of my constituents, uh, that who are also impacted by this, they're, they're expressing a high need for figuring out some sort of practice, practice mechanism, some sort of threshold of communication, so we can know, you know, on the weekday, instead of just waiting for March 1st to come, to find out they're, they're no longer gonna be able to participate. So I feel like there's something that needs to be placed in there in form of communication to keep folks updated and informed, um, 'cause I know there's a lot of coaches, a lot of student athletes who are, are on suspense. This is their life, this is something that, this is, you know, they're gonna remember this for the rest of their lives. And, I, I think, you know, and, and I do, I'm very grateful that the, the health inspector and, and the city is revisiting this, um, as we mentioned before, the importance of athletics. By the way, also, we are very aware of the safety precautions that were taken, and they're very necessary, uh, very, I understand. Um, I just definitely would like to just see, I don't know tomorrow's meeting, if that's gonna include communication, 'cause that's vital. I think transparency is so important with this process, that I think everyone needs to be aware that this is definitely, uh, impacting all, all sides of the spectrum. But that's just all I wanna add.
Thank you. Member Castellanos, I got, uh, Attorney Sadowite and then.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, um, I just have a, a question. Um, how often is there a cost associated with, uh, participating, uh, participating in sports or other activities within our schools?
Uh, help me out with that question a little bit. What do you mean by a cost?
Um, like, if, if, if you play a sport, they might charge a hundred dollars or something like that.
Zero, never. So, we don't, we don't, we don't have user fees.
Uh, for, for, for practically anything?
For, for athletics, for extracurricular activities, we, we don't, we don't charge a fee.
Okay, good, good. I just, you know, obviously, aside from, um, the, the sport, you know, if, if there was a cost associated with it, I would just ask the district, obviously, look into that. So, so, you know, obviously, there's, uh, financial, uh, issues, um, with, with loss of jobs or, or what, whatnot within our, our community. So, um, I just wanna make sure that that is not a burden for, for students to then get back in, uh, to the, to the, to the mix of things. So, um, that was my question, Jared, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaylee.
I just need to be, um, when do we sign into the GBL? Are we definitely in the GBL? 'Cause we used to be in the Northeast Conference and we decided to go into the GBL next year, but is next year or this year?
So, you, you recall, oh, boy, uh, maybe three meetings ago, that, that topic was, uh, raised and discussed, uh, here and approved by the committee. Um, I'll have to get back to you specifically. I, I'm, I think the official start is, uh, spring with the GBL. Oh, the mayor knows, go ahead, mayor. Uh, he may be frozen.
Mayor?
But I think what he was gonna say is that the official start is spring, but, uh.
Oh, I just wanna make sure.
I, I can speak to that, can everybody, everybody froze up, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We, we were, uh, as we voted in to start for the spring season, so the winter season was still Northeast Conference. Um, and I've been in contact with a number of the members of the GBL, the, the mayors and, uh, town administrators, and, uh, I know that, um, that, that it was unanimous vote, and I know they've been working closely with the A.D.s from Lynn English Human Classical, related to that. Uh, so, um, would be, um, it would be, all of the seasons would be in the GBL. So, all of the, all of the, even though the winter sports would have been in the Northeast Conference, we're talking about, this is the GBL that has made the decision, related to that. And, and reflective of the, as I said at the last meeting, we talked about this, the communities in the GBL have the same kind of COVID challenges, not that every other community doesn't, but substantial, uh, large cases and continuing increased cases, uh, are reflective of the communities in the GBL, much less so than the, the Northeast, Northeast Conference communities. But the, the agreement we had come to was, uh, to begin in the spring season for the GBL.
I'm just want, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, like, this is great, I'm thrilled if, um, our students can get back into the fields and play sports as soon as March 1st and be able to play basketball, I'm thrilled. I just wanted to make sure we're in that GBL. Thank you, mayor, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Can I, if I could, um.
Mayor McGee.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make clear, this is, this, you know, I've said this on these meetings, I've said it in numerous calls I'm on, these are really challenging times with really tough decisions that we're making here. And so, understanding the impact for the students and the athletes is clear for everyone on this committee, as well as the health director and everyone else in these cities that are making these decisions, and particularly, obviously, in the city of Lynn. So, um, you know, we, we are really trying to make the right decision here. I just, uh, I do have a, and I think it's important to highlight this, 'cause I did get correspondence from Michelle Damaris, related to what's going on. So I don't know if people are familiar, that St. Mary's has been impacted, uh, in terms of numerous teams have been both impacted by positive cases. They have had to quarantine for two weeks, teams that played have had to quarantine for two weeks. Marblehead Girls Hockey, after they fought fourth practice, it was in yesterday's paper, had cases where they had to take two weeks off from practice to quarantine. Redding, uh, is, is, um, opting out at least for another month or two. So this is, um, these health impacts are real, and so the decisions that we're making and the impact for people is really a challenge, and it's not easy, and, and again, for all of us making these decisions. But I think it's important to understand the reality of where we're at right now, and, and I know that St. Mary's, they're, they're down at least over half of their students have been in school this week, based on what's going on with those sports teams. And that's basketball, hockey, uh, swimming, a number of sports that have been impacted at St. Mary's. Um, and I just wanna reiterate the numbers. Since January 1st, there's been nine hundred and thirty-three new cases in Lynn, from January 1st to January 7th. Uh, we've had over a hundred cases, um, in terms of, in the Lynn Public School Department on all, in, in, in a number of different places. None of them are related to being in the buildings, but those cases are there, that's across the board in employees. We had a hundred and ninety-six cases, uh, last week, which was our record, and on Tuesday, we had two hundred and ten positive cases in the city of Lynn. Lynn Community Health Center shows that Lynn's positivity rate is twenty-three point four percent. Twenty-three four point four percent. That's, uh, the rate for the last seven days. Three percent's the rate that is acceptable to the CDC and, uh, mass, mass health. So, we're obviously in a red zone, and, um, we are really being dramatically impacted by this virus. And the surge has just begun from the holidays, uh, and it's, it's continuing. Uh, we're up to a hundred and sixty-three people who have died in the community. So the, the decisions that we're making are life-changing across the board. And, and so these are really hard choices that we need to make, uh, and, uh, you know, we're all dealing with these. So I think it's important to understand.
I have a question.
Facing, and I think, you know, understanding that we're trying to get to where we need to be, hopefully with the vaccinations. And I think it's really important that we continue to highlight the safety and the efficiency, efficacy of the vaccinations, so that when they are available, starting next week, the first responders in Lynn will be starting to be vaccinated. So we're finally going in a good direction. Nursing homes have been starting to get vaccinations. Uh, but that, we also need to highlight the real importance of people in our community understanding that they're safe, that they have been vetted for close to a year. Uh, this was not, uh, this is not something that was rushed out. These vaccinations are, um, are, are safe and efficient and effective. And we need to make sure that people are willing to be involved in the process to get these vaccinations, uh, starting with us first responders next week. So, um, I just think that those points are really important to, to take cognizance of what, what is going on.
Mayor McGee.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Ms.
That was, that was, again, that was from the, all of that information was from the, the health director. She sent that off to me today.
Thank you very much, mayor. Ms. Kaylee was, I, I had something after you on the athletics, if that's all right, or did you, did you have a question?
I just wanted to ask the mayor if the cases were, like, students? Were there any students in those numbers? Because a lot of parents and people think that it's just adults and no students, uh, being.
The, 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 this, again, the, these aren't cases that are related, any of those cases are not related to, um, most of the, all of those cases. And I think even if I'm looking at some of the cases related to St. Mary's, those are social gatherings and family events.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if you look at the numbers, uh, these are, these are general numbers, these aren't, uh, specific cases, nor are they available to, for specific cases. But fifty percent of the, the data reflects, uh, an inability to understand where the cases are coming from. So the reality is, it's across the board, and I think we had the numbers, but there was, uh, the last number, I can get the numbers in terms of the ages, they're, they're definitely, um, there's definitely a substantial amount of, um, cases that are going from zero to thirty. And, uh, in turn, you know, but, but it's across the board. But the cases are, um, the reality is, it's, it's a full-blown community spread, and it's not really clear where these cases are coming from. And I don't think you're gonna, and if you're looking at the state cases, fifty percent of the cases, it's clear community spread. It's coming from, from many places. I've been on calls with Dr. Roberts from Northship Medical Center, and he said, uh, anywhere you're going, uh, we are sharing a swapping air, basically is what he says. If you swap, you know, if you're in a place where you're indoors and you're close enough to swappy air, you should not be doing it unless you're in your, your own household. 'Cause you're, you will be a subject to maybe getting infected by this virus. Um, so, uh, that's, and, and again, the, the, the real, the reality of what's going on, and I think we'll talk about it later, and I, I, I know the health director and others have talked about it, we, I signed a letter today, is the next several weeks are really the, the, the real challenging point. The spike is coming from Thanksgiving, and now it's into the holidays. So it's really the outbreak of the increased cases that's happening now. So if people can really, uh, over the next two or three weeks, follow the guidelines that we've talked about and continue to talk about, there's an opportunity here to really bring down the, um, the, the rate of, um, infection in our community. And it's not just Lynn, it's, uh, you know, if you're looking at California, um, they're rationing care right now, they're telling ambulances, if you don't think the person is eligible, it would be, uh, a, a candidate to actually, um, be, be revived, then they're not recommending they bring them to hospitals, 'cause the hospitals are full. Uh, the hospitals in Massachusetts aren't there now, but it's a real challenge. So this, this is not going away, uh, today or tomorrow, uh, unless we all come together and really make the effort to do what we need to do. And, uh, um, it's a, it's a real challenge.
Thank you. Um, thank you, mayor, for those really important updates, and also thank you to the, the health department. Um, I just had a question about the athletic plan, um, that, that we're, that we're talking about here. Uh, first, I just wanna thank Dr. Tuttwiler, um, and then, and then Ms. Capola, just your hand, um, for, uh, I'll get to you. And next, um, the, the, I just wanna thank the administration for putting that forward, their proposal, the, the athletic directors, all the coaches, um, that worked on this, and also the other communities in this league that are, um, created this, this opportunity, and above all of the players for their, for their patience, um, in, in, and, and feedback and, and involvement in, in the planning for this. Um, we know how hard this is, and we really appreciate the sacrifice that you are making, um, for the, for the city and, and, uh, are excited about the potential for this, uh, for this opportunity. Um, the, the, the question I had was, so for the, for the March 1st start, is that a start of, of competition? Or is that, so is that mean that there's potential for practices and, and, and beforehand? How, yeah, so can you say a little more about that, please?
Yeah, on the, the, the calendar that they've developed, um, there's a proposal for, um, you know, what, what they're calling preseason activities that would be practiced. It could be, um, you know, scrimmage and things of that nature. The specifics of that, as the calendar lays out, um, are still in, in development. Uh, but the idea is that, uh, there'd be an opportunity in advance of the first for, uh, student athletes to begin, uh, prep, preparing. And I see, uh, Deputy Superintendent Bajero wants to add.
Um, Mr. McGary, uh, McGary, Mr. McGary sent me, um, some of the things they're gonna be talking about tomorrow, so like entry, exit into practice areas, structure of practice, uh, will they allow buses, length of practices, how many practices, an app that students and coaches must use to prove no symptoms prior to practices. So those are some of the things that they're, um, that's not everything, but that's some of the things that they'll be talking through and trying to finalize. They plan to submit it to Dr. Tuttwiler, myself, and, um, Michelle Damaris, uh, for us to, you know, look at and approve.
Great, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, and, and thanks also, um, to the, uh, to the public health department for working with us, uh, on this, to try to find a way to do it safely. I think we said all along that the goal is to, is to find a way to allow students this opportunity safely. Um, and, you know, uh, uh, excited that that is, uh, the, is, seems, appears to be an opportunity. And, and as the mayor said, with the vaccinations on their way, um, could, could be, probably, looking more and more promising, um, for that calendar that was weighed out. Uh, Member Capola.
This before, but I know that it's mandatory for the flu shot, so I'm just wondering if Dr. Tuttwiler has any update on that? I mean, they won't be able to play the sports if they, you know, don't have the flu shot. So, if you're talking about, you know, starting practices, how does that affect that? And do we know how, what the percentage is? Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, the state has extended, uh, the, uh, flu shot mandate, uh, I believe until the end of February. Uh, I wanna quickly double-check that. Uh, but the language also, you know, in the spirit of full disclosure, uh, doesn't quite feel like a mandate. Uh, they call it a mandate that students be, uh, receive a flu vaccine by that established date, and then it's up to, uh, local municipalities or towns to kind of decide, um, you know, how they're gonna respond if students don't. Uh, and so, uh, I will tell you that, uh, boy, uh, maybe two months ago, we were deeply concerned about, um, our flu vaccine, uh, completion percentage. Uh, at that point, it was, you know, maybe in the twenties or thereabout, uh, in terms of the percentage. Uh, it's now up around sixty. Uh, and so, uh, families have been taking advantage of, um, the, you know, ease of access, uh, and, and getting it done. And that was actually, um, uh, slightly before the vacation, uh, maybe a week or two before the vacation when I got that last number. So it might have even gone up since then. Uh, but we, we can, you know, the, the, the beauty in the continuous planning, and as Member Castellanos said, uh, communication, uh, is that, you know, we, we can now leverage the coaches and, and, and really getting the word out to, to students about, uh, the student athletes about, uh, the importance of getting that done, um, you know, in the time that we have before, uh, this begins.
Great, well, we're just about at the end of time, um, for the subcommittee meeting. Member Castellanos?
I just want, just one thing, so, just to clarify, so since the season's moved, so, uh, will we be planning to play the GBL in the winter, fall two, in the spring? Is that something that, that's, was, that's the plan, right?
Correct. I think, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, you mentioned this, the exciting part of that is that the, the, uh, the fall, the fall, uh, pieces that were missing, there's, there's gonna be three seasons, fall, winter, and spring. Um, that schedule includes all, all, so the GBL will, is, is going to be taking all those sports, is that correct, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Uh, yeah, so all three seasons would.
All three seasons, so that means that the lost season in the fall will be eligible for the opportunity to be, um, played in the, in the springtime.
So would that be a, a six-week staggered start, like, a six, six-week split or all together? I'm just a little confused how that would work.
Yeah, if I may.
Please, Dr. Tuttwiler, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's approximately, um, six weeks for each season, March 10th, April, uh, excuse me, March 1st to April 10th, April 12th, uh, to May 15th, and then May 17th, uh, to July 3rd. So, you know, give or take, uh, around that period of time.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Maybe the, um, ground will be thinned when they play.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Um, great, I think that's all we had for the athletic subcommittee. Member Castellanos, if you wanna submit a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Do we want to, uh, go right into the, is people ready to go right into the meeting? Sounds good. I don't hear any objections. Give me one minute.
Mayor?
Yes, Dr. Tuttwiler.
I, I don't, I don't wanna interrupt you, I, I just want to, um, connect you with, uh, uh, our, our, our student, uh, representative has joined us. Uh, Eric Nascio Fermini. Good evening, sir.
Dr. Tuttwiler, it's great to see you, Mayor McGee, great to see you, everyone, great to see you as well, thank you for having me. I'm sorry I came a little late, I didn't know for seven, six, six-thirty, but I'm so happy to be here, so happy you're listening.
Yeah, we, we, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, we're all glad to have you on, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Eric Nascio, great. So, uh, we're ready to go, and I'm, um, ready, would like to start the meeting. So, uh, would like to welcome to the first special, the Lynn School Committee, uh, Thursday, January 7th, 2021. Happy New Year to everyone, came quickly. happy new year to everyone came quickly or not quick enough depending on your perspective uh it's good to be in a new year and hopefully uh we're looking into a better direction this year in twenty twenty one I'd like to uh there's a preliminary matter would like to confirm attendance so Nan would you please confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present.
Um miss I'm missing uh Mr. Ford.
So we're just asking for their voices not to be silenced in the political process and.
And could would you would you mind just going through the uh I know we've done it at the preliminary meeting would you just mind going through and uh uh getting um doing a roll call on those that are here and uh uh.
Mr. Castellanos. Yes. Uh Ms. Capola.
Present.
Yes Mr. Ford. Absent. Uh Ms. Gately.
Yep.
And Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Yep and uh Mr. Sadoway.
Present.
Yes and uh Mayor McGee.
Present.
Okay.
Uh again this is Mayor Tom McGee and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us uh for this open meeting of the Lynn School Committee that is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth twenty twenty and that's due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen vi- virus we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such the governor's order sus- sus- order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location further all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the city website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment and for this meeting the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference video conference via the Zoom platform as posted on the city's website and on the Lynn's Public Schools website. Additionally this meeting can be viewed on the local cable channels channel three for Comcast and channel thirty seven for Verizon. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly please be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are not turning uh before we turn to the first item in the agenda uh I want to just cover the ground rules I know we've been through these at each meeting but it's important to uh reiterate those ground rules uh so that we can effectively and clearly conduct our business and ensure accurate accurate meeting uh minutes as chairman I will introduce these each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks I will get on the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called and remember to mute mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Uh for any response wait for the chair uh to yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking or I will do that as well. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members please do throw through the chair taking care to identify yourselves and finally each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. With that um I will go to the uh agenda and I would ask that you stand and I know that uh Don Hussey has uh the screen up with the flag is in the meeting you join me in uh a salute to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands a nation under God with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like everyone to stand for a moment of silence in memory of Robert H. Powers who's the retired who was a retired principal who passed away on December twenty fifth of twenty twenty please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So on our agenda tonight um uh the uh there's uh the discussion of the proposed it's on a new business discussion of the proposed FY twenty twenty one budget. Um Dr. Tutwiler and uh uh Kevin are here would you like to uh to get started on that?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
You might not have the revised um minutes there's actually some things beforehand.
Okay what is what is it uh thank you for the uh heads up.
Uh so the first thing is uh a request to accept a donation of gifts to Walmart and Target from the Topsfield PTO to Ingles Elementary School.
Thank you for bringing that up I don't have that on my agenda and thanks for bringing it up um so I'm open for a motion to uh um to put that on the floor would you like to put that in motion form and we can take that up?
Yeah motion form.
Okay so that motion has been made by a member Sadoway does it is there a second?
Second.
Uh that requires a roll call.
Castellanos.
Yes.
Yes Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Yes Mr. Ford absent Ms. Gately.
Yes.
Yes Ms. Nefferson.
Yes.
Yes Ms. Sadoway.
Yes.
Yes Mayor McGee.
Yes.
And there are just two additional ones do you want me to just put them in the form of a motion?
Yes please would you do those I appreciate it thank you Member Sadoway.
Uh I make a motion to request to accept a donation of approximately four thousand dollars in miscellaneous school supplies from Jason Gonzalez of Staples to the Soul Anderson Elementary School and a request to accept a donation of approximately ten thousand dollars in miscellaneous school supplies from Jason Hurd of Staples to the Lynn Public Schools.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that requires a roll call.
Castellanos. Mr. Castellanos. Yes okay uh Mr. Capola.
Yes.
Yes Ms. Ford absent Ms. Gately.
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson.
Yes.
Ms. Sadoway.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes. Thanks again Ma- Member Sadoway thank you uh so next on the new business on the agenda is the discussion of the proposed FY twenty one budget. Member uh Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah uh i- i- if I may uh just sort of set the table um you know among the the many things that are or have been uh different over the course uh of the past yeah you know uh ten months uh or so uh the the process around budget is is one of those things um typically uh there's a more formal presentation uh with specifics around uh how we gathered input um you know sort of the the emerging themes from that input uh and potentially how uh the budget uh reflects our our uh ongoing efforts to achieve uh our strategic objectives. Um what you have before you or what you've been presented uh reflects uh a budget that is a hundred and sixty nine point uh eight million dollars uh for FY twenty one approximately ten and a half uh million dollars over the previous fiscal year. Uh I think that I would say while the development of this budget uh was you know is an aberration from the way uh that we've typically done it uh I think it still reflects uh forward movement on our strategic objectives um and uh also embracing feedback uh that we that we heard uh during the during last year. Uh last year uh our input gathering uh was done in a way uh and at a scale that I don't think we've ever done before it was really a community process in preparation for uh what we thought we were going to believe uh receive as a result of the Student Opportunity Act um but there were still some core uh elements that came out of that feedback uh things like the uh mental health of of our students things like uh supporting special education uh things like uh improvements and and innovation uh and instruction uh and and while again the process was different I think we've taken some pretty substantive uh steps uh with this budget most of them were driven by circumstances I know that you uh understand uh but I think it's still important to uh to connect those dots um one aspect uh that I'd like to point out uh relative to this budget uh it does reflect uh an addition of uh thirty positions uh and all of those positions are direct service uh positions meaning uh they are positions wherein uh the professionals are working directly uh with students or directly uh with families um and that I know is a is a value that uh the the school committee embraces deeply and so I thought it important to um to point that out uh we are we received as we typically do uh a number of questions from committee members in advance that we've responded to uh in writing uh but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have uh in addition.
Member Gately thank you Dr. Tutwiler Member Gately then Member Castellanos and uh we'll start with that.
Okay I just want to do this um for Mr. Furman our student school. We get this budget and this is what it looks like so you can see what we're looking at and everything in it is broken down so that we can see how much money we spend in what school in what area so we get that we go through it we ask questions and then then we come here and it's a public hearing so people can look at it and see okay thank you. I just thought I could do that because it's very confusing sitting there you know listening to a budget talk.
Thanks Lorraine Member Castellanos.
Dr. Tutwiler I want to thank you for um providing us with the time too I felt we had enough time to go through this budget and Kevin and the your whole team um very you know it was a transparent process um you guys you know the committee I saw a lot of the questions and a lot of folks I felt a lot of us had had similar um insights on the budget uh I I I'm just I'm just a little um uh before I go into my question I'm very very proud to say I was I was able to take part of that district wide strategic plan and to see it come to fruition is remarkable I think a lot of the folks when we go through the budget it's kind of you know you could talk a lot but I could see the actions in the initiatives and I could see the commitment to um what you're trying to do um as a social worker there's a reason why I ran for office I I was so I'm so passionate about you know advocating for our most vulnerable students and I could see it's that the the investments uh they're not just they're smart investments and it's it's coming from a very strategic approach and it's definitely uh even during a pandemic it's just just a lot of folks out there it's very it's 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 very amazing the work that Lynn Public Schools is doing um so we are getting an increase of thirteen point three million in chapter seventy funds um for FY twenty one how and I I and I know because I broke down the budget but just for the public uh just your priorities how did we prioritize that those funds um you know could we just without going so deep and you know and 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 why we we prioritize that fund but could we just get a breakdown of what that high level thinking was and what you know I know it includes your core values and your team there's a very you have inclusive practices that you guys do together there's a lot of communication but could you kind of give us an idea of what you know when when we get those extra increases where where do they go?
Hmm hmm so um you you know uh as as I mentioned in the sort of the the table setting part um you know uh we we a lot of what was done was this year was driven by circumstance I mean we had to uh prepare to launch the school year um and to engage with students and families in a way we've never done before and frankly the way in a way that no one uh has ever done before and we had to do that quickly uh and we applied uh to that thinking the same sort of philosophy or or core values as we always had. Uh we want to first make sure that we're tending to the um physical and uh mental well being of our students and so you know the addition of the social workers to ensure that there's a social worker at every school at the Lynn at least one at every school in the Lynn Public Schools is reflective of that core value um we wanted to ensure um you know that we were were able to provide uh an optimal learning experience um so funds uh leveraged toward technology uh not just the devices but also the learning management uh system Schoology uh and the um uh accompanying uh feature uh school messenger which we're using for outreach which is actually just recently launched uh so that we can keep parents informed in a in a more robust way uh you know that speaks to that to to that value and then each and every year uh in the addition of the text also uh the PC land text to support uh we did not enough uh we I we know we don't have enough but we we were uh pretty pretty diligent about uh adding in that area to ensure uh a support for staff and for families with uh all of this technology that is now sort of uh in the hands of uh uh staff and 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 students um uh and then um you know I I I'd say you know as is the case every year uh we always look at um you know the the traditional aspects uh class size um special education caseloads uh compliance uh and really make moves to increase uh or add staff i- i- in those areas to ensure that we are um you know approaching if not getting uh all the way to compliance uh decreasing caseloads so that um uh you know people in the position of say for example speech therapists uh actually can uh provide uh the minutes of support uh called for on a student's grid uh those sort of foundational uh things are also uh played a significant role uh in in how this this budget is broken down uh what it you know it took on a very um sort of unnatural uh course like we didn't have you know last spring to sort of think about okay this is what the budget is uh and here's how we're gonna you know put it to work for the following year uh we kind of had to put the pieces together uh while we were in motion um but I think you know as I look at it um I am I I I feel that we uh clung to our commitment uh and our values um in 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 really tangible ways.
Dr. Tutwiler I appreciate that I just have just a line item um question around around the middle school intermeros and junior high sports I see for each middle school it's about thirty thou- thirty three thousand two hundred eighty nine dollars right so when you add up all three I I believe those are cost saves cost savings because we we're not having those I believe we're not really doing in sports or intermeros is that part of the the savings that we're I think how do we are we allocating those funds are we saving those funds? Um you know and I know throughout this budget I noticed a couple you know some of the line items we were saving money so what what are we doing with some of those funds like just to kind of just in terms of just transparency that I'll start with the line item that I see Deputy Superintendent Rijero probably has some answers for that but I just wanted to know for that specific um line item um they're in each middle school so then it's 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 the junior high sports and intermero so one's thirteen eight oh five the next one is nineteen forty four so that's just for me I just want to know what you know if those mon- if that money was earmarked or saved what's the?
Deputy Superintendent Rijero would you like to speak to that please?
For um Mike McGary oversees that budget um and I will say at the middle schools they are doing some virtual um you know uh sports kind of things uh Mike probably we maybe we can get from Mike a a summary of or an update on what exactly they're doing uh for you for a later meeting uh or it could be sent to you but um some of that is being utilized for virtual um activities sports activities with the middle school we're hoping that you know if things go well that maybe in the spring uh they can you know utilize some of those funds to to actually do some in person in small group with safety precautions in place um but right now anything they're doing is virtual.
But I appreciate that because it's I would hate to have that money just not being used and uh and it sounds like this is a stipend is that what that is that?
The coaches or teachers who are doing it uh get a stipend yes.
That's excellent okay that's that's fine that's great with me thank you.
Dr. Tutwiler I want to ask that number Sadoway. Go ahead Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah I just wanted to say quickly that um you know one of the things that we decided I mean if you look Yeah, I just wanted to say quickly that um, you know, one of the things that we decided, I mean, if you look at this budget, uh the FY twenty-one column compared to the FY twenty column, like we rolled a lot of things forward. Uh some things that we weren't sure and still remain unsure uh will actually happen uh or happening at at varying degrees. But one thing that we really um, you know, felt strongly about is, you know, of course, we 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 wanted to build a core program uh and and experience for students during the school day. But we wanted to make sure that we protected uh and offered uh opportunities for students to engage in in a in a less uh sort of lower stakes way outside of school. And it's, again, it's not ideal, you know, intramural sports, I mean, they're not playing against each other, but there are ways uh to engage uh in in Zoom meetings. Uh we talked about this with high school athletics, a way to build camaraderie and fellowship among the students. Uh to talk about, you know, a particular sports game or 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 team or follow one and have discussions about it. There are ways to to continue to connect with students and give them an opportunity after school to do something that um is is fun and engaging. Um and, you know, I wouldn't necessarily call it savings yet. Uh at a certain point, it will, you know, if things don't happen uh the way that we want them to, that that will become savings. And at that point, uh we'll be coming back to uh potentially this school committee to talk about how we're going to uh leverage those savings.
Thank you. Member Sadoway?
Thank you. Um, uh Dr. Tualala, um where, within the 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 budget, I have a few questions. Um, it it it, for athletics, athletics and health, um what is, what is the the health part of of the athletics uh that i- is in this part of the budget?
Kevin, do you wanna help me with that question?
Uh well, yeah, let me, I'm trying to go to that page as we speak, but the, uh again, the athletics and health is all uh part of, Mike Geary would be responsible for that. I mean, you have the, on that page, uh there are a couple things, if you go, if you go to that page, Brian, you'll see. The first item, it's always been there, it's the extracurricular stipends, and as we were just talking about, like these are for, the first item is all for the club, so that's there. You have your um elementary uh phys ed teachers are there, but they also, I believe, teach health as part of the uh overall curriculum. They're not all just straight phys ed teachers. Then you have your adaptive phys ed teacher, then you have your other trainers. So the health, I think, is built in um to as part of the phys ed teachers. There are certain ones that actually teach health as part of that. So even though we call, it's obviously called athletics and health, but, you know, that's, that rolls into uh as part of the uh health, like athletic phys ed slash health teachers.
And and are we, um, uh this might, this would be a question, I guess, for Dr. Tualala. Are we, are we trying to also include uh SEL in in some of these health programs? Um, you know, ones that may involve um, you know, sexual education or or stuff like that. Um, I I think that it would be, would be good to to have like a a involvement with regards to how to, you know, kinda push that out for for some of our students. So um, that's why, when I, when I saw the health there next to athletics, I'm just like, whoa, whoa, that's interesting that it's not uh under SEL. Um it's it's an emotional, it's 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 a touchy subject. You know, it it's, it's, it's something that the kids need to learn, uh but I I just think that it would be, would be uh good to make sure that the instructions and everything like that are are, you know, vetted through the uh SEL. Um, the second question I had um was for you, Dr. Tualala. Um over the past three or four years, we've had many new leaders, um special education, SEL, attendance, uh soon to be the um Welcome Center and I believe HR, if I'm missing anyone, it's not on purpose. But um, have you seen the uh the the budget and the needs in in certain areas uh change over time because of the new leadership? Or has it pretty much stayed the same?
Um, I wouldn't necessarily say that it's driven by, you know, any changes are driven by leadership uh more so uh as a result of a process. Uh identifying need and and in some cases prioritizing uh certain needs. So for example, uh, you know, again, through the 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 process uh of developing the Student Opportunity Act, I mean, we were essentially going to um allocate or or anchor much of what that that additional funding uh in addressing special education needs. Uh and uh I would say that 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 leader uh is 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 very adamant and very strong uh as it relates to um advocating for those needs. But uh it it's, it's not a hard fight for her because uh I think uh the community, uh our staff, uh and I also see those needs. And so uh I I'd say that uh we're we're thrilled with our new leadership. I would say any changes, um increases, uh you know, or or decreases wouldn't necessarily be um based on who the leader is. It's more uh as a result of a process.
I I'm just saying that because, you know, obviously this past year, we've learned that things change very quickly. Um and sometimes it's out of, out of our control. So, you know, i- if if there is uh a need that one of these leaders see, um maybe that needs to be a- a- adjusted, I just, I wanna make sure that they know that they can go to you and you you can come to us uh to change the budget around if need be. Um, I think that that's, it's, it's, it's an important thing for our leaders to know. Um, you know, ju- if it's, if it's always been done that way, that's not a good uh response. I I think that-
I'll speak to that.
Yeah.
I think uh Kim and Deb can, and Kevin uh can certainly attest to the fact that uh uh I, you know, when someone says it's the way we've always done it, that's like, you know, fingernails on the chalkboard to me. Um I I really don't like that statement uh at all. I mean, we're always looking for ways to evolve and do things better. We're never stuck in a, well, this is the way we've al- we've always done it. Uh I'd also say that um, you know, you know, were you to uh ask any leader, Kevin, Dem, Kim, Deb, any principal, we talk a lot about this idea of psychological safety. Uh the idea of feeling comfortable, um, you know, giving feedback, being constructively critical, asking for things when you need, when you need them. Uh because as the research would would say, you know, where there is psychological safety, uh there's excellence, there's forward movement, there's innovation. And so uh I really try to, you know, uh, y- you know, support a a a culture uh amongst the leadership team where where people feel comfortable um speaking up.
And I I can tell you, I've witnessed it um just with our our most recent uh interviews for the Welcome Center. And um I I think that uh your words are very true, so I I appreciate you um saying that. Um, how are we with uh uh filling or putting out the um?
Uh- HR?
Not HR, HR and uh the uh attendance officer, the second one. Do we still have a need for that?
Yep, we do. Um, that can be posted. Um and HR uh was posted and disclosed in a process uh to begin shortly.
Thank you.
Member Gately? And then Member Capola, and then Member Nicholson.
Michael, Attorney Sadoway, I just wanna make sure you got that, that job description, the posting for that attendance officer to Mary.
Um, I I'm not sure if I got it to her, but I would have emailed it to you. I'll I'll send it to her now, okay?
Okay, yep, thank you. Uh my question, um, the budget, Kevin, you did a phenomenal job on the budget and you answered all my questions. Um, some of my questions were based around um, you know, um, things that I noticed that were missing, but I was just not looking for them in the right place. So like, um, one of the things I was questioning is, hold on. Uh I didn't see the um. Kevin, do you remember my question? It was, I didn't see the um.
What was the extracurricular you're looking for, the, you know, mock trial? Remember we had that?
Yeah, the mock trial, that's what it was. I didn't see the mock trial, but Kevin directed me to it. But one thing that I, the question I have is, in middle school and high school, um and in some of the elementary schools, there are drama. They have plays and they have drama and they're all excited about those. But one time I was at Classical and, uh no, I was at a fundraiser with Jared Nicholson, and a woman came up to me asking me about costumes for Classical High School because they were doing a play and she had to sew the the costumes and everything. So I'm noticing, because Kevin advised me, that the Supply Theater Arts Middle School and High School has thirty thousand dollars for such things. And I just wanna make sure that the high school principals know about it so that they can go to that, to that line item and request, you you know, costumes or whatever they may need. But that was basically all I had to ask, is if they knew it was there to go to, to get it, because it's there. Yes, Ken?
Patty Kowalski oversees that and makes sure those funds are used, the head of, the head of um art, drama.
Right, and Julie Carol, Carol is the uh, is the other person that handles uh all the theater productions and the ordering of those supplies.
I just wanted to make sure that the teachers knew. Well, this woman was so, like, they don't have anything for our students. So I I just wanna make sure that the people that are working with the people in drama know that it's available. Thanks.
Alrighty, thank you, Lorraine.
Member Capola?
Yep, uh Kevin, I do want, I wanna give you um, you did an excellent job on the budget as usual. It's pretty much the same format. What I liked about it is um, and and I give it to you, Dr. Tualala also, is that we didn't really have a lot of layoffs. I know there is a line there with a large unemployment amount on it. Um and we talked about not laying people off. So that was just um, one question I I just like, if you could answer. But the thing that I I was really impressed with and um, that was one of the things on your evaluation last year, was the concern for social workers and and the special ed jobs. On the special ed jobs, um, is there an increase in children in special ed? Or do we just give some relief to classrooms? And I just want everybody out there to know that every school now has a social worker as well as a nurse. Um, I know when I first came on the committee, we did not have that. We would share a nurse between like three schools, which was really um not a good thing. And I I am looking forward to um the Welcoming Center new director. So our families, when they come in, when they can come in, will, it will be a um um a much better welcome for them. And the other thing is, I want everybody to know about the help desk technicians, that we did add five on. So there should be no problem for parents to be able to get help if they're stuck. So maybe just the unemployment, if you can give an answer, amount.
Yeah, sure. Um, as I think in one, in the questions I answered, um, in the first four months, we received over like four hundred thousand dollars in um invoices. Uh so when I was, you know, adjusting this budget before I brought it forward, I I'm kinda, I I have to project almost for the worst-case scenario. I'm not sure that's gonna, I'm hoping that won't be a true number at the end of the year, and as uh Brian Castellanos said, there could be some additional funds there. Um, uh because we're protesting some of those invoices, uh we've had a rash of um fraudulent unemployment claims. Um and I believe to date, it was like two hundred and fifty-seven since September claims. And some of those were paid outright and uh we do get invoice from, but we have to then protest those and go through a process to see if they can waive those on the city. And the city's been uh dealing with this as well. So that was uh part of it. We had a number of people also over the summer who normally would have worked summer school, thought they were eligible and uh filed. And again, we have to protest those as well because they really weren't eligible uh at that time. And also, if you're aware, we did with some of our um elementary cafeteria workers accepted a furlough, which is in essence, they uh they are collecting unemployment and we do have to pay those claims out. So I have to, I just wanna budget it so that make sure that we have enough funds. Uh I anticipate that, I'm really anticipate that number hopefully uh will be less than that. And as the superintendent said, as we get further on into the spring and get a good handle where we are, you know, I'm hoping that we can come back and look for a reappropriation of those funds for something else at that time.
Thank you.
Um, Member Nicholson, sorry, Member Nicholson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, yeah, I I I also will echo the gratitude for the presentation. The format that we received the budget makes it really easy to review and compare, and I appreciate that. Um, I also, I I I think the format of us submitting the questions in advance and getting the answers is 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 really, is efficient and helpful. Um I do have a couple follow-up. I submitted my questions and I I got the answers. I do have a couple, couple follow-up questions and the answers. I also just wonder if it would be helpful for for transparency's sake for us to to post those, where where we post the budget on the website. Um, since otherwise we would have been doing it in the, in the open meeting. Um, so that people can review those if they, if they want. Um, so the 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 first follow-up question I have is on the the question four and the the high-level questions. And it it, there may not be an answer to this, right? So I I had asked if uh, what we saw as the driver of the increase, I think it's important to note that while we, we saw a substantial increase in funds, as the answer points out, a lot of that was driven in an increase in students. So it's not necessarily an a a uh increase in per-student spending, um but an increase because we have all these, all these new students. I I think it's just remarkable. First, it's, it it in some ways, it's testament to the city where families see a future here. And i- i- in a moment when public school enrollment is is drastically declining, um there are, there's a significant number of families that that see a future here. Um, and and I, it it may be just impossible to explain, but I think it's just important for us to to note that this is, that this is happening, that we're continuing to see that kind of increase um in terms of what the drivers are.
Uh, sure. You wanna, you wanna take that, or you want me to take that, Pat?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh I I mean, it, it's really, it's really, it's a guess. Uh and and not even a guess. I, we don't, I don't know. Uh, I mean, you you, I I I think there could be an effort to um study this more deeply, you know, whether it's uh, you know, housing-related, and maybe it's, it's a question that we ask uh when uh when we welcome a new family to the district um in the current Parent Information Center, soon to be Welcome Center, like, you know, um, you know, talk to us about, you know, your, 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 you know, why this district, why this city? Uh I I don't have an answer for that. Um, I I, I do see it as a, as a feather uh in the cap of of the city and certainly this, the school district. We welcome every student with wel- with with open arms, but can't quite put my finger on, uh, you know, why, uh why our numbers continue to grow where in many other communities, uh Boston and and others continue to see uh their their numbers dip. Um affordability, maybe, I mean, who knows? Uh familiarity, family, uh other circumstances, I I don't know. What's that?
Lynn is the best.
Lynn is the best, you know? That might be the reason. Uh I I I I don't know. Uh but I, in the uh written response, you you saw that, you know, th- there's no real rhyme or reason. You know, New Bedford saw, you know, a, an increase and and various other gateway cities saw, you know, a decrease. Um, I don't know. Kevin, I'm sorry, I I cut you off at the beginning.
Sorry, Kevin?
Uh, uh no, I I think it's a, it's a combination of things. Uh as far as why people are coming here, I I mean, I think there's a number of reasons. I think, you know, I think Superintendent touched upon housing availability. I think local access to Boston, I mean, we're right here. You know, it's really a prime place to to get uh affordable housing, uh and still have access to get into the main city. Um, I I do, you know, I always thank the state delegation and everything because they do have input in this. Because if you, when I looked at the numbers of some of the other cities that had some increase, it wasn't quite the same percentage-wise that we got. So uh there might be a little bit more to the increases. I always feel that there are. It's not just straight per pupil. But we did have the um largest increase out of all of the districts. Uh and also, as we said previously in meetings, we received the largest increase in Chapter Seventy funds, which is great. And I mean, it allows us to do what the superintendent talked about. I mean, the great things of social workers in every building. I mean, and as Donna Capola mentioned, nurses, uh when I started issues correctly, we had nurses sharing, you know, three buildings. And uh we're, we've built up. And I think that um these funds really, even though it's- And I think that, um, these funds really, even though it's not what we was expecting per the original, but it's, it's really allowed us to move this district forward every year, and I think that's the, with the testament that allows us to keep going ahead and, uh, and, you know, pushing the district forward, uh, in a great place. So I, I, I think there, it's a lot to do with that, but, I mean, why, you know, that, and, and it's also, um, you know, to me, it, it's just, it's, it's, it's a great place to live and, and work too. I mean, I've been here now, um, almost thirteen years, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's wonderful, great people and everything else. And I mean, we have good leadership now, and we're, I, I think continue, hopefully, I think next year we'll see similar increases, and I'm optimistic that, and the state delegation pushing down there, um, they come in and talk to us periodically, and I, I think that's wonderful, because that's how it gets done, working together.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, and, and both of you had mentioned, um, a, a, a lot of factors, and also just the, the sort of intricateness of it, how hard it is to, to, to understand exactly what's going on. Uh, one of the factors that both of you mentioned was, was housing affordability, and I think it's, it's worth mentioning that I know that the, the city is doing some great work around housing affordability, working with the MIPC, um, and this is something that they looked at specifically, because this is a trend that's, that's happened over several years now, um, and I, and I, and I think it's a, a combination, and I've been involved with it on Adam's steering committee, and it's a combination, uh, according to them, of, the turnover in the housing stock, you have young families coming into places where older families had lived and, and hadn't had students in, in the, in schools in a while, and also the percentage of, of families that are choosing the public schools, um, really kids that are here. And, and I think Dr. Tuttwiler, you're, you're, I agree with your assessment, this is something that, that, that we can be proud of as a city. I mean, i- it goes to show that, that, like I said, that people see a future here, and doesn't mean that we, that we and our state delegation don't need to continue to, to advocate for us to have the resources to deal, to deal with that, um, and, and both on the operational side that we're, that we're talking about tonight, and on the capital side, that, um, we will be continuing to talk about throughout the year, I'm sure, um, but I, but I, but I think it's worth noting. Um, the next, the next follow-up question I had was about the, uh, uh, under the CARES grant expenditures, number six, um, so we, right, the hundred thousand dollars represents a hundred and eighty-two students, and, and, uh, we, we have the ability to still enroll additional students, um, according to the answer there, which is, which is great, which is terrific. Do, given the, the current login today, do we think that we have the students who need internet access logged on? Like, is, is a hundred and eighty-two the right number, or are there still students out there that, that need to be signed up for this program?
You know, th- that's, if I may, Mayor, um, okay, um, uh, you, that's a good question. Uh, I, I will tell you that our attendance continues to be pretty strong, uh, and, and outreach also, uh, on behalf of the school, you know, to, to students and, and families also continues to be robust. Um, I, you know, y- y- you, it was a ga-, that was also a guessing game, right? You couldn't quite know how many families were going to need that resource, uh, and I think Kevin, uh, and he can speak to this, uh, just sort of put a placeholder there in terms of funds, um, but our sense is, again, you know, in, in the early goings, uh, you know, i- into November, you know, we were over ninety percent, ninety-two, ninety-three percent average daily, average daily attendance, uh, and so, you know, we, we've got a, a, a large number of students attending daily, uh, which we're really proud of and, and happy about. Uh, so I, I don't know, uh, if that number is going to remain, I don't know if that number's gonna go up based on circumstance or, 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 or something else, um, but, uh, we feel confident that we can support, uh, families if that need is there. Kevin, do you want to say something about, um?
The, uh, the, what I would add is, when we passed out, um, the laptops to the families and students, um, there was a flyer attached to every device box in Spanish and English that had this opportunity, should someone need it, it was available, so, and as, uh, we said, we are getting calls, um, uh, at the help desk, uh, if people are calling with problems, or we have appointments where people are coming in, and we remind them if there's an issue with the internet, this is still available. Um, you know, this was supposed to be, uh, the, uh, the company was gonna Comcast, was gonna only stop it as of December, but they see the need, so they've allowed us to continue to add. So should we have anybody else that really needs to go on, we're gonna allow them to go on it through the end of the year. Uh, so this is superintendent, we started this, we just put a number out there and try to secure a number of licenses to do this, uh, a kind of a, a, a high number, just to ensure that we would always have enough placeholders if somebody needed these services. Um, and we've also used these funds, we had one building that doesn't have actual cable access, so we had to use another, uh, type of devices to get them internet, and we've used these funds for that too, so it's not just strictly Comcast. So we went, worked, uh, Tim Roach, who was, uh, working with and worked with the, um, the families directly to get them access, because there was no physical cable, it was downtown, we're a building where it would have cost a lot of money to run cable into the building, so we had to give them another wireless, uh, 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 way to get the, uh, the children, as well as some of the homeless, because some of the, uh, homeless kids that are in shelters, they only can get it in certain areas, so we gave them another device that they could get it, uh, automatically, so if they're in their room, they wouldn't have to, you know, they could work out of their room too. So we will work with any family that is having issues to try to get them, to make sure that their children are on, on, you know, on the device every day if need be.
Yeah, can I just add to that, that it's real, real important for parents that are listening, but even school committee members, if parents are calling you about, you know, calling the help desk, the help desk is working really, really hard to support the families, but what we're finding is that they're calling, that they're not necessarily leaving a message, um, and it's real important that they leave that message so that the help desk can call them back, because if they're just calling and hanging up, the help desk doesn't know who that was or whether or not it was an issue. So if you could just reiterate that to leave a message, even in Spanish, because we do have staff that speak Spanish, um, you know, just leave that message so that they can get back to them with their phone number.
Great. Thank you, yeah, and, and tho- those efforts are, are, are much appreciated, and, and really, uh, glad to hear that we're, we're sort of going above and beyond to secure that internet access, you know, I hope that as the year wears on, that we're able to have the confidence to, to, as we sort of work through the attendance data and, and figure out who is not logging on, that we can say with confidence that we've, that we've figured out, we, we've identified anyone that has a potential internet issue, and, and, and set them up with whatever they need, uh, so that there, 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 there's no sort of, uh, need to guess, because we, we've, we've worked our way through the list. Um, but, yeah, thank you again for the, for the, for the presentation. I, I, I agree, Dr. Tuttwiler, with, with your assessment of the investments that have been made. I think looking at that list of new positions is, is, is a great way to, to see where the priority of the district is, but if you look through the, one of the reasons why the budget is, you keep on saying the budget's well presented, one of the reasons why it's really easy is because the, the last fiscal year is presented next to the current fiscal year for every single line item, and so you can see where the increases are, and, and, you know, i- i- you see that, because a lot of the, the costs of our personnel, you see, and, and, and we have programs that we're committed to, you see that there's a lot of consistency year over year. A lot of it's driven by student enrollment, which, which you see, but, um, the, the, the new positions is a great way to look at where your priorities are, and the fact that we've invested in social work, invested in special education, invested in technology, i- i- are the, are the right investments, I think, so thank you.
Member Castellano, then Member Gaitley. And then Member Sadoway.
Brian, unmute.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Awesome. So I, I was just, um, saying that, uh, before I get into this, I want to give a quick shout-out to, um, Principal Scully from Fecto Larry. Uh, I've been able to see some of the great work that's conducted over at Fecto, I've had, um, youth that I've worked with across that stage, um, they, and they do, they pull off miracles, and a lot of the teachers and the folks over there, they earn their checks, they earn that money, they earn everything they do over there. Um, you know, and something for me, that's, I think, is, is, is just, when, when I think about equity, um, I would love to see, as we talk about placeholder and funds and, and, looking down the, the road, to see increased enrichment opportunities, you know, vocational access, like the TAP program that's at Lynn Tech, life skills, I know those things, I know we offer it in, in some form of a capacity there, but I just feel like Fecto Larry sometimes can, you know, get left behind, I hate to say it like that, but those are your most at-risk, uh, students, uh, and I've been able to work really close with these students, and some of these kids don't make it. Um, I've had those kids in, in my case low too, who don't end up, um, continuing on with their education, and have to go GD route or a different route in life, um, but I, I just, I, I do want to just add that, you know, that is such an important, um, just for my sake as a social worker, I, I don't think I could, you know, just leave this budget conversation without mentioning the great work, and I think that, that we could do better, and, and if, if, you know, when we talk about cost savings and we looking down the road, if that's something that even is, you know, even, which, it's, it's a pandemic, I understand, I just, I just feel like that, that's something that is, um, it's always gonna be close to my heart, and I know the teachers over there, um, they do a lot of work, and I, I know more, Scully is, is, is amazing, and I just, very grateful. I get to see, guy, I get to see it on the day, so when I, when I, when I, when I think about what they do, it's just am- amazing, and I've been grateful enough to be able to witness it first-hand, so I think, you know, every, every one of those line items were very well, they earned it, and I think they deserve more for that, so.
Thank you. Member Gaitley, then Member Capola.
Um, Kevin, can I ask you a question about, um, the Comcast and the one-eight-two students? I, I had a parent contact me about the speed, well, she can't be on her TV while her daughter's on, uh, remote learning during the day because something's all messed up with her house, but couldn't we get Comcast to help her with the speed, like the daughter could ha-, you know, what you were just talking about, she could have whatever she needs in her, in her room to be able to get on easily?
Well, we can try to work with them, but, um, I'm not sure, is it the ones that, is it the internet we are providing, or is it their personal, uh, own internet would be the first question? So, I mean, I would suggest that if you contact that parent, if they've reached out to Comcast and doesn't have, don't have any help there, then maybe at least call our help desk, and we can try to talk them through it, and, uh, you know, uh, see if there's a way, uh, you know, that we could assist them something, but, uh, if it sounds like it's a speed issue, uh, with their internet, and if they, you know, depending on, uh, what version they're using, and if the, if the TV, you know, usually it shouldn't necessarily affect, but if you have a lot of people on, like I, I think we, uh, we talked, I talked to someone about this, like I have two children, and if they're streaming videos and I'm trying to use the computer, my computer goes a lot slower, you know what I mean? So it does log it down, depending on how many people are on your, uh, you know, internet at that time. So if she's watching regular TV, it might not be an issue, but if she's watching Netflix or something, that's a streaming video service that you might be getting through your TV too. So it could be a number of things, I would suggest that the first place, if they are paying for Comcast, is to contact them first and see what they say, and if not, I mean, we'll try to assist like always, and, and see if we can help out it the other way.
Alright, thanks.
Uh, yeah, Kevin, I, 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 I'm getting the same complaints, and it's the internet that, that we're providing, and it's normally in households with multiple children. So, um, I, I know what we offer is what we offer, um, um, so, um, I don't know if, if there's an, an ability to increase it, uh, per student, if that's something that we can talk to Comcast about, um, but, uh, you know, i- i- multiple, you know, parents are working from home too, so they could be, uh, going on to the, the same internet, um, that, that's provided by the school, and it's just, it's, it's definitely, uh, an issue for some fa- uh, families that, that have multiple kids. Um, it's just, it's, it's, it's not the, the premium package, as, as you know, um, so, you know, they, they get a, a pretty basic package, and it's, it's, it has, it has to be shared if, if there's multiple kids. Um, so I don't know if there's, again, if there's a way to, to see if we can in- increase it per student or something like that.
We would have to talk to them, the package that they were offering is, as you know, is not the most, you know, the high speed, it's just basic internet, and, um, I would agree that if there's multiple, uh, uh, children, uh, I think, you know, that's something we might have to, uh, you know, get, have them contact us if that's the case, and we can at least explore what our other opportunities are, because, you know, those funds, you know, within, I can explain in that account, we can utilize, uh, if we need to, at that point, but, uh, we obviously try that first, because that's, it's, you know, it's a reasonable amount of money per household to, to get them at least internet access.
Yeah, and it's, and it's trial and error, which is good, you know, at least we're, we're, we're getting that, to know, you know, what, what, what it can sustain, um, and, and if it's an ongoing issue, the parents should definitely reach, reach out, we have the budget, like, uh, line item for it, so I appreciate, uh, that being put out there, so, you know, if we could share that, that'd be great, um, and, um...
Dr. Tuttwiler, did you have a, did you want to make a comment related to that? You're all set. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm good, Mayor, I, I, I was essentially gonna say what Kevin said.
Okay.
Uh, and, and Kevin, um, i- is there a need to, um, update the, uh, uh, ELL Director, um, position in, in the book that we have? Um, I know that we got some updates, but we didn't get one to correct that. Um, we eliminated the position of the Director of Language Report, and we created the, one of the Executive Directors, so I want to make sure that we're not leaving that out there, um, and, 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 um, making it seem as though it's gonna be filled at a later date.
Uh, no, I just, when I, actually, as, when I, see, I just started this budget process last spring, and then it, it kind of sat and then shifted, and, you know, we were finalizing the budget process, I, I double-checked the salary, so the salary's correct, I never, unfortunately, adjusted the name to the newest name, so that's gonna have to be done, and I, I have your note, and I've already made a change, I can send you those sheets, but I just wanted to make sure there weren't any other changes, so you keep getting new sheets all the time, so I'll, I'll adjust those and send them out to everybody for next week.
Perfect, thank you.
Member Capola?
I, I just want to piggyback on, onto Brian's, because, um, I don't think a lot of people know that we have something called the LEAP program in the evening for, for students that really need that, and I just, um, you know, it was in different locations, but it's now with, with Fecto Larry, and how affordable it is for us in the school department, it has almost two hundred students by the number, and that, and the budget is only three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. I mean, we're, we're talking well under two thousand dollars per student, and I think it's excellent, and we never hear any complaints, you know, the way that we did before, so that's a credit to Mara Scully, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions related to the budget? Um, I know next, uh, on the agenda is the, um, executive session, uh, but before we, before we get to that, I'd just like to, um, address what, um, happened in Washington yesterday. I'd just like to speak a little bit to it, if, um, the committee would indulge my, uh, comments, uh, as we're going into an election year in 2021, and I think this committee meeting tonight, but more importantly, the meetings we have and the work that goes on to reflect the, uh, this, the, the work that needs to be done in our community with elected officials that work every day to try and ensure that we, our students, um, get the best possible education and the work that goes into it, but more importantly, it is, it is about, um, open and fair elections, and how we really represent the interest of our community in those kind of elections. And, you know, yesterday's attack in Washington was a horrific display of disrespect for one of our country's most symbolic institutions, the United States Capitol. A key principle of our democracy has been the peaceful transfer of power from one president to the next. This longstanding tradition began in eighteen oh one, when, uh, John Adams stepped down from his position as president, returned to Massachusetts after losing the election to Thomas Jefferson. I strongly condemn the domestic terrorism and actions to undermine and prevent the constitution, constitutionally authorized responsibility of the newly-elected Congress to certify the electoral votes for both the president-elect and vice president-elect. We as Americans have always shown the courage to join as one nation whenever presented with any obstacles. Today, today we need to come together and understand our common bonds that we share, and realize that through cooperation, no challenge is too great for us to overcome. We can do and must do better as a country. The kind of hate that was displayed yesterday in Washington is unacceptable and has no home in this great country we all, all live in together. Uh, it was, uh, uh, something that's unprecedented in my lifetime, and I felt that, uh, as we work and, and on, uh, the jobs we do when I'm elected from the people in this community, uh, to make sure that we make a difference in our community, that we respect that... on, uh, the jobs we do when I'm elected from the people in this community, uh, to make sure that we make a difference in our community, that we respect that, uh, the constitution and the reality of what it takes to be part of a country that, uh, fear elections reflect the depth of our democracy, so I just wanted to make a statement tonight, and not let, uh, uh, the actions that stunned me and most Americans yesterday in terms of what happened in Washington. And as I said, we need to work together to ensure that we understand we're all Americans, and the bonds that we share are much stronger than those that uh, separate us, so it's, I think it's important to reflect on that today and move forward, uh, as a community to ensure that we, we do, we do better in the city and in the country, so, thanks for bearing with me on that. Uh, with that, I think we're ready to go into, yes, member Sadoway? You're, you're on mute.
I'm gonna make that motion to go into executive session.
A motion to go into executive session?
To discuss the stra- strategies with respect to collective bargain relative to the Lynn Teachers Union Local ten thirty-seven and the Administrators Association and Nurses Local thirty-one forty-seven dash eight contracts.
Second. There's a second, member Castellanos requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos? Mr. Castellanos, yes. Ms. Quora?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ford, absent. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Yes, Mamaghi?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Dr. Tuttwiler, um?
Um, can I say something?
Member Gately?
Um, before we go into executive session, um, we need to explain it to our student.
I was getting ready to do that.
Oh, but I just want you to know what we're doing, sorry.
Mayor, if I may, but, but.
We're all on the same page, so I appreciate that, uh, member Gately. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, if you'd like to, uh?
Well, member Gately typically sits next to the student and, and, and trains the student as the meeting goes, goes along, so I'll welcome her uh, to, to, to do her traditional role.
Member Gately.
Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session, and, um, there's rules and regulations that surround it, so it's a very, um, uh, how would you describe it, very?
Private.
Private, can't talk about it, um, meeting, uh, we vote, and then after we take a vote, after our discussion, we come back. But unfortunately, you can't come with us, so, um, you can either decide to stay and stay until we end the meeting, you know, cause we're gonna come back, um, or you can decide that you don't wanna wait, and it would be okay for you to go. So that would be up to you, we wouldn't take offense to it, all right?
And, and just to follow up on that, the, um, uh, these are negotiations that are confidential between, uh, the, the, the union and, um, the committee, so it is, um, it is a confidential discussion that needs to be just, just the members that are, that can make the decisions, so it's not to, uh, exclude you, uh, but it's a good explanation for member Gately, so, um, hopefully we'll see you on the other side. Um, we ready to, to go into Dr. Capola?
All right, there you go.
Does Nia made it?
She might be on mute, cause it meets everybody.
Nia?
Yeah, all day, okay, I'm here.
Okay, roll call on the motion to go back into regular session.
Okay, return to regular session at eight forty-two. Uh, Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Quora?
Yes.
Ford, absent, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mamaghi?
Yes. So, uh, would anyone like to make a motion, member Sadoway?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify, uh, the votes taken in executive session. Um, we, uh, took a vote on the, um, only contract presented, which is the Lynn Teachers Union Local ten thirty-seven, uh, to uh, to approve that, um, uh, I believe it's through the twenty-first of February, is that correct, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Right.
Okay.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion then made and seconded, uh, roll call required.
Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Quora?
Yes.
Ford, absent, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mamaghi?
Yes.
Passed.
We waiting on signing this?
Uh, it, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler's signing it with, um.
Yep, so, we're all set.
And now I believe it's Garrett.
Member Nicholson?
Wha- what's that? Yeah, yes, yes.
Uh, for the, the, uh, subcommittee.
Did? There were, there were no votes taken.
No, there's no, no votes taken, so there's no agenda on that, right?
Right.
Okay, so with that, uh, there's no other, um, nothing else on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn and seconded, roll call required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Quora?
Yes.
Ford, absent, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadoway?
Yes.
Mamaghi?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Eight thirty-four.
Have a good night, and we will see you next week. If not, see you.
Have a good night. Look at that beautiful fog.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.